Dan Callahan.
Here.
David Latewick.
Here.
Was that right?
Yep.
No, no. Stuart Pop here. And Bill Ices.
Here.
All right, everyone's here.
Good. And do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
There's support?
Second.
Who's second?
Me.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the approval of the minutes and our recording secretary has a comment.
Yeah, I received two emails that I did not include in the previous minutes. They, oh, so I did not feel it was necessary to include that, but they did.
Okay. Okay.
What was the topic?
It was on the LaFontaine, the people that live behind the LaFontaine.
Yeah.
Any other additions, corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as added?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
With addition.
With the addition removed.
Is there support?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to approve the minutes as, with the addition. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And public comment, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Moving on to new business. 1500 Ridge Road. The Halyard Ridge proposal. And planner has her report.
Yes, thank you Chairman Zabalski. Good evening Commissioners Laura Hoff. This application is for a deviation to a sign in an industrial property. 1500 Ridge Road. Many of you are familiar with this property as it was approved. The site plan was approved just a couple of years ago. A snapshot of the building elevations is provided on page three, just to familiarize yourself with that property. But the applicant is asking for a multi-tenant monument sign that would go along Ridge Road. And the sign does comply with all of the regular sign standards in terms of dimensions. So its set back, its height, its signable area, the number of signs, et cetera. However, the base of the sign is not a masonry material, which requires planning commission review for any deviation from that standard. So on page two, at the top, we provide a language in Article 19 that grants the planning commission latitude for considering alternative materials to the sign base. And there's three standards. Those are listed out in italics with our findings after each one. We find that there is justification to allow for deviation to the sign base, and that would be aluminum in this case. I'm happy to read through those in detail, but I think this is pretty straightforward.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Dieters. I am with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Falls Avenue in Warren. Well, thank you for your consideration this evening. As the planner had mentioned here, because there are no masonry elements on the site, we think that the aluminum base as proposed is very fitting in style with the facade. Most of it is an EFS facade, softer material. We certainly don't want to match that just from lawn equipment and maintenance and things like that. So we think what we've done is very tasteful and appropriate for the site.
We've made these exceptions for the new folks here in the past in these industrial parks. That seems to be a big thing where they like the aluminum or stainless steel look. Does anyone object to that base with that non-masonry base?
Aluminum, when it rusts, it oxidizes, right? It'll never be red or ugly rusty color, right? It's like a little white misty thing. So it's consistent, I think, with the rest of the structure that's on the site. So I had no objection.
Okay. I have a question, though, on this, you know, on the rendering that you submitted. Is, where you have the panels, where you're going to have the tenants' names. Is that going to all be white or is this just for illustration?
You know, the tenants' names have not all been determined yet. They're still, the owner is still negotiating through that. In all likelihood, the background will be white for them, and then they'll each contain their own text. And that, I believe that there is an intent for that to try to keep it subdued, but it'll probably follow if there's a corporate color that the tenants have, they'd like to respect that.
And if the company name is a certain font, I assume you'll try to match that?
Yes.
Laura, do we have any, anything in the ordinance that states how bright that? You know, I'm more concerned about the white and the brightness. If it was a color, I'm not as concerned about it.
Um, no, there is not a requirement for that.
Well, just so you pass on, I think we all agree, we don't want a blinding white light. If you recognize something subdued.
Understood. And the acrylic material is about a quarter inch thick. It's, that in itself acts as a diffuser. And to tell you the truth is, if it's too bright, you can't read the sign anyway. It almost, it's counter to what the tenants would like.
Right, right. Okay.
Laura, would you all have to review the text of each of the individual panels in the sign ordinance?
No, if it's the corporate logo, then that can just be installed.
There's no standard about letter height or anything like that?
Not for an industrial sign.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this sign lit up in any way or is a light shining on the sign?
It's internally illuminated.
Okay. And is that LED lights?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, you know, we usually put like rain hats to try and prevent light from going up, right? Is there any kind of shielding on there to try and keep the light contained around the sign as opposed to getting thrown off, right, up into the atmosphere? I didn't see, when I looked at the cross-sections here, I just didn't see anything to stop the light from bleeding up. That was the question I'm really trying to get to.
There's a cap on the top of the sign, on the cabinet itself, but the illumination would project out straight, straight out through the face.
Okay. Because it's LED, it's directional. That's a good answer.
By the way, I have a question. So like, you have the address, is that illuminated as well or is that just a?
That is not. Those are.
Attached?
It is dimensional. They're, so they'll stick out a little bit and create a little bit of cast shadow during the daylight, but they're not illuminated.
Do you know if they're going to put landscaping along the base of it?
I do not know that. I do not know if that's the intent.
Yeah, because it doesn't look like it's very high. So if they did put something there, it would block out the address.
Correct, yeah. My guess is because it's in a, sort of in the lawn out in front, there really is not much room for putting plantings, and that'd be just one more thing that would, would almost make the address useless with that.
Okay. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to approve? And that we have no objection to the material?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the sign review number two for Halyard Ridge, 1500 Ridge Road, including allowing the base to be aluminum.
Oh, his papers are black, I'm like.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the sign review number two memorandum for Halyard Ridge, 1500 Ridge Road, including approval of the base being aluminum.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Ices to approve, well, there's an application, approve the sign for 1500 Ridge Road. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Sure thing. Next is application 2557, the Comerica Bank Site Plan Amendment. And Ms. Hall, your report.
Thank you. And this is an application for improvements to the existing Comerica Bank at 42345 Ann Arbor Road. No change to the building facade or the square footage of the building is proposed with this application. The scope of work is really just limited to the removal of excess parking areas, improvements to the internal site circulation, installation of landscaping and rain gardens, adjustments to the exterior site lighting. And there's currently a dumpster on the property without an enclosure. They'd be providing the enclosure for that to house it. Going through our review, starting on page two, in terms of the site design, the zoning and use, the property is on the Ann Arbor Road corridor and planned in the future land use map as the Ann Arbor Road corridor commercial. So there's no change to the existing use. And it is currently consistent with both the zoning map and the master plan. In terms of the site appearance and coordination, there's no change proposed to the dimensional standards, so those are not impacted as part of this project. Criteria three, preservation of site features. There's only four trees currently on the site. Two will be removed as part of this improvement. There's an 18-inch maple that's near the building entrance, and there is an 18-inch spruce that's just off the Lily Road entrance. We note that the spruce is located within a fall zone of an overhead utility pole with a lot of equipment, and it is in the area where the future rain garden is planned. So we find that it's reasonable that this tree would be removed, but since it is 18 inches, it does qualify as a heritage tree. So 18 inches of new caliper must be provided. The maple, on the other hand, is located near the building entrance, and it does appear to be in relatively good fair condition, but the lower limbs have been significantly removed over time. We note that we defer to the applicant on their plans for this tree and if it could be preserved. If not, another 18 inches of new caliper would need to be provided on the site. Criteria four, impact on public services. This is not applicable. The site is developed and will be further improved with the stormwater detention that's proposed. Vehicular access and circulation. So there is no change to the site's curb cuts. There's two access, or three access drives, really, two on Ann Arbor Road and one off Lily. However, because they are removing some of the existing parking and some of the drive aisles, the internal site circulation is improved. They also detail emergency vehicle and trash pickup in their site plan, and there's no concerns with that flow. Criteria six, pedestrian access and circulation. Along the Ann Arbor Road frontage, there currently is a sidewalk, and that will remain. However, they are going to be linking that to the building entrance, which is a benefit. So they're providing that internal sidewalk. And then along Lily Road, there is no sidewalk, and they will be installing a five-foot sidewalk along that frontage and bridging the gap between two properties. So that's a definite improvement as part of this project. Criteria seven, emergency access. The project has been approved by the Township Fire Department. In terms of landscaping, we provide a table on page four that details compliance with the required street trees, both on Ann Arbor Road and Lily, and also their parking lot screening. We just note that while they do provide some replacement trees for the spruce and the maple, if they are going to remove both trees, then additional trees will be needed to be planted on site. In terms of the parking and loading, the site is extremely overparked for its square footage. There's 62 parking spaces on the site when only 20 are required. So they are reducing that to 20, and they still have their 15 parking spaces, so, or stacking spaces, excuse me. So they're in compliance with that. Building design and architecture, as mentioned, no change to the facade. And then in terms of the lighting, they will be replacing some of the light poles and the heads on those. The site appears in the photometric plan to be too bright. So they'll need to submit a revised photometric plan that complies with the maximum illumination levels. And they need to provide a note regarding turning off the lighting a half hour after the closing of the business, except for security lighting. But that is provided on page five. So our recommendation is based on compliance with Article 29, that tentative and final site plan approval be granted for Comerica Bank, provided that a revised landscape plan is submitted and that a revised photometric plan is submitted and reviewed by the Administrative Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And the engineering report?
Hi, she did a wonderful job recapping that. I'm Melissa Chwani with Spalding D. Decker, the Township Engineer. Really, just the backstory of this, why we even did the review as far as engineering goes, is that any potential work, and I know NOAC and FRAUSS is here, so they can, you know, verify this, but any potential work within Lily, obviously, of being a Wayne County road, would need that right-of-way permit. So that was generated. And then Eagle was generated simply because of the number of acre disturbance, obviously. There's no, you know, utility changes. It's truly just the pavement. As far as, you know, removal, replace for the stormwater, the addition of the rain gardens, as she mentioned. So if anything, it's some, you know, improvements as far as Township Engineers concerned. And we also have a tentative final site plan recommendation for approval.
Thank you. And the applicant's received a report from the fire department, and they have no objections from a public safety perspective. And the applicant is here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bryce Gerbaugh. I'm here with NOAC and FRAUSS Engineers. Our address is 4677 Woodward Avenue, Pontiac, 48342. Just to give a brief overview of the site, most of which was already touched on, we're planning to greatly reduce the impervious area. We're reducing it from 62 parking stalls down to 21, with only 20 being required per the ordinance. The nice flip side of this is that we are also going to be greatly increasing the landscaping, and we're going to be maximizing this use by installing rain gardens in order to help provide onsite detention. We are also going to be providing additional trees and low shrubs along the right-of-way there to help break it up a little bit, as there are a couple of trees in that area we have to remove. We are going to be installing a new stormwater maintenance system to help bring the site up to ordinance compliance. And as I touched on before, we're going to be utilizing those rain gardens for onsite detention. And finally, as was also touched on, we're going to be updating the lighting a bit with the replacement of some existing lights and the installation of some new ones. We have an average of three-foot candles on the site with a maximum of 8.3. Just to provide some clarification on the review letter we received, because there was a couple of points of confusion that we wanted, the client has asked me to clarify. If we look at item three on the site plan review, the preservation of site features, there is an underlined note regarding a tree number 798. I just wanted to note that there are no honey locuses present on this site, and we do not have a tree 798. It is our understanding that that was a typo or carried over from another review. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other clarification I wanted to provide was pertaining to item number eight on sheet five. There is, excuse me, in the highlighted portion, it mentions that additional screening will be necessary along the western property as the adjoining land is residentially zoned. It is our understanding that there are no residential zones adjacent to our site, and this is also a carryover from perhaps a different review. And below that, there is a mention of the Plymouth Lake Point Water Tower being located near the property. That is also not near our property. So I just wanted to offer some clarification on those points as they, we've, it is our understanding that those don't pertain to our site and that perhaps there was a typo. So hopefully, I can answer any questions that you good folks might have this evening.
So, if I, I caught most of what you said, except when you were talking about the two trees. So I'm concerned, and I think the rest of the commission would be too, about the one tree that possibly could be saved, not the one that's in the fall zone for the utility, but the 18-inch spruce, or no, it's the maple.
Maple.
It's the maple.
It's our intention to maintain that maple. Excuse me, we have, you're talking about the one along Lily Road, correct?
Right. That's right, isn't it?
But the spruce is along Lily Road, the maple is near the building entrance.
Right, right.
You can actually see it on the picture here. Bob, go to the left.
Yeah. My left or your left?
Any close, right there, it's behind the, right there, behind the.
Right by the entrance.
That's what I was.
I just wanted to make sure I'm getting my bearings here. So you're talking about that eight-inch spruce there. It is our intention that we're going to need to remove that to facilitate the rain garden. However, we have since done updated layouts as we've moved the project forward, and we were able to reduce the size of that rain garden in order to preserve that eight-inch spruce.
But what about the 18-inch maple?
Oh, it's our intention to maintain that tree. Are you talking about removing it? I apologize.
Yeah, you're going to remove it or?
No, it's to remain.
Oh, it's going to remain?
Yeah.
Okay. And so is the spruce?
Yeah.
Because you're reducing the rain garden?
Yeah, so on the plans that you have in front of you, it shows that that spruce is going to be removed, but we've since been able to reduce the size of the rain garden by proposing some additional rain gardens that will come on future sets of plans. And through that action, we're able to preserve that spruce as well.
Okay. And on the, the lights, are those, by any chance, are they dark sky compliant?
I will be honest with you, I did not organize the photometric plans. I'm afraid I don't know that answer.
Okay. So, any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to redo the math on the trees. Originally, you had four, you're going to kill two. Okay, looks like you're getting 16, but now it sounds like you're not going to kill the two trees. You're going to shrink the rain garden, right?
Yeah.
Off the Lily Entrance Road, and you're going to keep that maple that's by the entrance?
Yep, so the maple is to remain, and after our alterations on our current plan set, that spruce will also remain.
Okay, so we got four, we're keeping four. Are we still adding the 16 more trees?
That is my understanding correct.
Okay, shrinking the rain garden. What's driving Comerica to do this? Is there like a flooding issue, or water that's not going anywhere? Are they having accidents in the parking lot? I'm just trying to understand the why, right? Because it's a lot of money they're putting into revamping this site.
Are you asking about the revamping as a whole or the rain gardens in particular?
Yeah, yeah, the revamping as a whole.
We are currently working with Comerica on a number of projects, and the common goal has been to reduce the impervious area on all of them, because a lot of these projects were constructed when the requirement for parking spaces was much higher. As noted, we're reducing it from 62 down to 21. And it's our common finding that a lot of these sites are way overparked. So it's to the betterment of these sites. When comes time to replace the pavement, that we do reduce that impervious area. And it just so happens on this site that we have the space to put those rain gardens, which are a cheaper alternative to what we commonly propose, which is an underground detention system.
Yeah, I think this is great. It's going to definitely be an improvement.
I completely agree with Commissioner Doris Evans. You guys have done a nice job on this.
Thank you.
It's really to clean it up, make it look more professional, yeah. And with all the online banking, you just don't get the traffic at banks anymore.
Yeah, we've actually communicated with some communities who have outright admitted that their ordinance regarding required parking spaces for banks needs to be updated now that, as you said, mobile banking is so popular, yeah.
Laura, would you need a revised site plan, given these changes, the reduction, or the reduction of the rain garden and the trees that would remain?
Yes, they could be, one of the conditions was the revised landscape plan, so this could suffice for that.
Any other questions or concerns?
Not a question or concern, I just wanted to go on the record, right? Banks are in the business of making money. It's what they do, okay? So they're making an investment to make it look better, which I think is wonderful, okay? It's well thought out. We're not taking trees out, which I'm very happy about. Bottom line here is, they have less pavement to seal coat and to snow plow in the wintertime. So there's a payback on this, it's in their best interest, right? But it does upgrade the site, and it was due for a makeover. So the landscape work is nicely done.
Is there a motion to grant tentative and final site plan amendment, subject to the resubmission to the planner for final review?
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant tentative and final site plan approval for the proposed site improvements at the Comerica Bank at 42345 Ann Arbor Road, PC Application Number 2557, subject to the conditions on the planner's report on page six, and an updated site plan, including the retention of the true maple and spruce trees.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to grant tentative and final site plan amendment approval, subject to site conditions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Yeah. Next is application 2556, the Plymouth Flex Site Development Plan for PUD. And Ms. Hall, your report.
Thank you. This application is for the site development plan that would accompany this property after having a PUD overlay approved. This development is a vacant parcel, approximately six acres. It is located just north of School Craft Road. To the west is the Seek Temple, and to the north is M14 and I-275 interchange. And to the east is the new Virginia Tile development that has been approved by this commission. Our site plan review, starting on page two. Details that the, in terms of criteria number one, site design, zoning and use, that this property is on the OR Office Research District and contains that PUD overlay that was previously approved. The project aligns with the purpose of the Office Research District by introducing a high-quality office and high-tech development, by leveraging the flexibility of the PUD option to accommodate a broader range of uses. The proposed layout with multiple buildings, shared access, shared access to Virginia Tile to the east, and unified architectural elements is consistent with the Township's master plan and the PUD option. In terms of criteria two, site appearance and coordination, we note that the layout makes efficient use of the property with buildings and access lanes arranged to support a clear and functional design. Each unit has direct access and nearby parking, contributing to an organized development pattern. The size and placement of the buildings are consistent with the character and intensity of nearby uses. We also note that the project is in compliance with the dimensional standards, not only for the lot dimensions, but also the dimensions of each of the buildings themselves. And those are listed in two different tables there, starting on page three. Criteria number three is the preservation of site features. This is a vacant property. It is heavily wooded, and there will be significant grading in order to accommodate the new development. So there's 329 trees that are proposed to be removed. Two of those are heritage trees. 53 are permitted trees. of those are heritage trees, fifty-three are permitted trees, and forty-three are non-permitted trees, they're either dead and poor condition or considered undesirable species. They are required based on the replacement totals to provide a hundred and sixty inches of caliper, and their landscape plan proposes a hundred and sixty-three, so they just exceed that requirement.
What is DBH again?
Diameter at breast height. Continuing on page four, regarding preservation of features, the, of natural features, the zoning ordinance requires that with a PUD, a minimum of twenty percent of the site be preserved as open space. Their plan provides approximately forty-two percent as either landscaped or open space area. They also have proposed a picnic area in the northwest corner of their property. This must be further dimensioned in order to confirm that it meets the minimum one thousand square foot requirement for civic or usable space within the PUD. Number four, impact on public services. Based on both the engineering and fire department's review, we don't expect that this project would place unreasonable demand on any utilities. Criteria five, vehicular access and circulation. Both of the, or the, the access is provided from School Craft Road, which is a major thoroughfare in the township. Because this development is paired with Virginia Tile to the east, they are able to consolidate and have one access drive for the developments, which is a benefit as it reduces curb cuts onto School Craft Road and conflict points. For number six, pedestrian access and circulation, they are providing a sidewalk along School Craft Road, which will match with the Virginia Tile sidewalk. However, they do not currently include an internal sidewalk that runs from School Craft into the development, so they will need to provide that for the PUD, which there is sufficient space to make that improvement. Number seven, emergency access. The fire department has reviewed the site plan and they have found no deficiencies. Number, criteria number eight, landscaping. On page six, we provide a table that outlines the various standards and whether they're for any site or specific to the PUD. Specific to the PUD are some additional interior parking lot landscaping standards that still have to be met. However, there is sufficient space to accommodate those additional islands and landscaping. We just need to see a revised landscape plan in order to meet that. But in, in general, they are in compliance, just a few minor tweaks here and there. On page seven, criteria regarding fencing, fences are allowed in the Office Research District and under a PUD, but that information must be fully presented to the Planning Commission regarding fence material and design to determine compliance. And we note that a fence permit will also be required prior to any installation. Regarding criteria number ten, parking and loading, per the zoning ordinance, like the strict application would define this as a mini warehouse, which has a relatively low parking ratio. Only seven spaces would be required for this use per strict interpretation of the ordinance. However, the applicant is proposing a much greater number of parking spaces based on their experience with building these facilities in other areas, and just the range of uses that really could occupy, which the applicant is going to discuss a bit this evening. So we defer to the applicant on the parking that they would need for this use. We just note that if they will continue with the amount of parking that's proposed, they will need one additional barrier-free space, which could easily be accommodated. In terms of the loading zone, the ordinance requires one loading zone per building. Only buildings C and D have a dedicated loading zone. However, I think there's sufficient space on the site that would allow for loading to any of the buildings, and the Planning Commission has the discretion to modify that standard. Criteria eleven, building design and architecture. Overall, the, the building elevations provide consistent treatment across all the different facades and are in compliance with the standard for uniform design. However, we note that the rear elevation of building A, which faces the Seek Temple, does not have the same level of visual interest as the other buildings, that's detailed on, on page nine of our review. So recommending that some greater attention to detail be provided to that facade. And also on page nine, we note that the facade calculations for materials still needs to be provided by the applicant and, if possible, to present the Planning Commission with some material samples of what those buildings would consist of. In terms of criteria twelve, exterior lighting, the site is in full compliance with the Township standards for lighting. Full lighting will be throughout the, the parking lot. And regarding waste receptacles, the trash, there's just a couple discrepancies between the, the different, the site plan sheets and the landscape plans, just exactly where those go, so that just needs to be cleaned up, probably different, different iterations of plan sets throughout the, the design process. But in general, we don't have concerns as to their, their locations or screening. Our recommendation is listed on page ten. Based on compliance, majority of compliance with Article twenty-nine and Article twenty-three, which controls for the PUD, we are recommending tentative site plan approval with a series of conditions that would include the internal sidewalk connection, the additional barrier-free space, the landscape plan slightly revised to accommodate parking lot landscaping, and the replacement ratio. Details on the fence, clarification on the final dumpster location, and then regarding the facade, the percentage of different building materials, and clarification on the square footage of the picnic area to meet that PUD standard. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks. And the engineering report?
Okay, so yeah, she, she recapped on a lot of those things, it was, as she had stated, a PUD agreement. It is both industrial spaces, we spoke about the location. Water service is going to be provided by an extension from the proposed twelve-inch water main for the Virginia Tile development. A domestic lead and a fire lead would be provided to serve the buildings, along with additional hydrants onsite. The sanitary service would be provided by an extension from the proposed eight-inch sanitary sewer along the shared driveway that's gonna be to the east with the Virginia Tile development. A sewer lead would be provided to serve, to service each building onsite for Plymouth, for Flex. The storm water would be collected by a single storm sewer collection system and then discharged onsite detention basin, which is south of the property, with an outlet to an existing twelve-inch storm pipeline that runs along School Craft Road. The adjacent Virginia Tile development is currently under engineering review and they're close to commencing their construction. We will be making sure to work with the township and them to help coordinate as the two properties are being developed. That is something that is required. They will have utilities and shared driveway proposed for the Virginia development to the east. And the rest were pretty much standard engineering generic comments we've made as far as landscaping, making sure you're not doing anything within the easements for both sanitary and water main. We kind of spoke to that in our tentative approval for their site plan. It is our recommendation at this time that we can go ahead and approve this, the tentative final site plan based on the items that they've presented to us thus far, and no, you know, urgent red flags.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And the fire department's report found no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. The applicant is here. Yep.
Alan Prost with Monument Engineering, two-nine-eight Veterans Drive in Fowlerville, Just, we had a pretty extensive team meeting yesterday to go over the review comments from the planner and the engineer. We feel that we don't have any issues with addressing the comments. Landscape islands will be added, where the striped islands are shown at the end of the buildings. We'll break up the fifteen continuous, fifteen continuous parking spaces with additional landscape islands at each building. The comment about the facade on building A, we did send some renderings over earlier today, I'm not sure Laura, if you're able to bring those up, but we will increase a facade on building A that is facing the Seek Temple, as well as adding additional landscape screening along that common property line there to, you know, to help visually reduce the impact there. We are asking a waiver from the Planning Commission for the two loading spaces for buildings A and B, and the reason for that is, these are units, they're individually, individually owned units, they're not a traditional storage facility. There're gonna be businesses that are gonna be running out of there, and each unit will be have dedicated parking spaces that'll be needed to them essentially in front of their units for customers and for loading and, and deliveries and stuff like that, which will mainly be in the form of a box truck or an Amazon or UPS vehicle. Trying to think of anything else. We do have the shared driveways, as Ms. Howley pointed out, with the Virginia Tile, we're also the engineer of record on Virginia Tile, so coordinating the plans and the utilities is, is pretty seamless in that regards. Just happy to answer any questions really from the commission.
So can you talk a little bit about the building materials? I mean, is it, I looked at your plan and it said wood, or is it APIS material? What exactly are the materials that will be used?
Yeah, so for, as you can see from the rendering, you've got, it's a, you know, they're a wood frame structure, you've got brick facade along with a cementitious lap siding and vertical, if you look on the gables, there's like a vertical baton type layout that will, that, you know, to differentiate from the actual areas where the, where your horizontal lap siding is at. And then the rest is all brick, you've got your overhead doors, you've got some decorative gables on the front, which we added to the west facing towards the temple, we added a couple more gables there, added more brick, and that's, that's really the bulk of, of your overall facade.
If you can bring samples in, will you come back?
Yep, absolutely.
That would be helpful. So I'm looking at the report here, where she's talking about the, the trees which do not meet the four-inch minimum caliper requirement.
We can, we can address that, you know, the trade-off there is you'll be fewer trees being planted to meet the, the number of inch caliber that's required, but we'll certainly address that with the revised landscape plan.
And, you know, I was looking at what was quoted here, some of the uses, which some were familiar from when this application came before us earlier, so mentioned small-scale warehousing and light fabrication, but is my understanding correct that any trucks would be more like a UPS truck, there's not gonna be any?
Correct.
Semis? Okay.
It'll be the bulk of the delivery requirements.
And, sorry, just, just more high-level before we get into the nits and nats. So these are purchased by people, so these aren't rental, these are purchased?
Correct, so this is technically gonna be a condominium development, and, which is commonly, you know, in a residential setting, but condominium can be used in any type of ownership setting. So each unit is gonna be an individual condominium, there's gonna be master deed and bylaws that are gonna be presented and reviewed by the Township Attorney, which will be, you know, part of the overall development agreement and approval that the Township is, is, we're taking from the Township. Yeah, so they're individually owned.
It seems like, sorry?
No, I, I'm building on yours.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're still proposing, there'll still be mezzanines inside with, with a bathroom?
Yeah, yeah, each unit will have a single bathroom, or be plum, there'll be plum for a bathroom and then?
Each, each one will have a bathroom, and then there's options for, depending on the type of user, for them to provide a mezzanine, like for this scenario, if someone had wanted to put a small, small office.
Right.
That type of scenario, they, they've got that option.
What are some examples of types of businesses that might purchase these?
I love Mr. Roberts, he's one of the owners.
Roberts, I'm one of the owners of the property. At similar developments that are in Colorado, Texas, Wisconsin, we've got all kinds of things, there are showrooms, gyms, car wrapping businesses, car detailing businesses, painters, plumbers, individual owners, you know, storing their car collections, and, you know, maybe working on their motorcycle, or storing their riding mower in the winter and their, their snowmobiles in the, in the summer. You name it, it, it's, it's an incredibly broad set of, of, of owners that we, that we've got. I did want to mention, since you asked, Mr. Pop, if the, Pop, I apologize.
Pop, yeah.
Pop. You asked about the ownership structure, I did want to add that they can be rented, once you own a unit, you can rent it out.
Oh, sure, but I meant?
But it's not just for rent by us.
Yeah, yeah, you're just not renting them all out.
That's correct.
Correct, and there is gonna be, you know, in a residential setting, it'd be an HOA, there's, there is gonna HOA that's gonna have, you know, a management company governing, you know, making sure that the bylaws are being adhered to, just like a residential HOA would, you know, making sure that the facade is upkept, the colors and stuff and whatnot, so. And again, the Township has the opportunity to review the bylaws and master deed.
And something I'll mention that I imagine will probably come up in a minute if I don't bring it up, is no marijuana, no, what was the other thing?
We, we discussed it at the board meeting in November.
Residential?
Yeah, no one living there.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was, I think those are the two big things that, that we, we police very closely. And when I say, I say we, because even though we sell them, another member of the ownership group manages a couple dozen of these properties, and so I'll probably be involved, I'm the local guy, so I'll probably be involved in, in management of the, of the facility.
And like each unit's roughly like twenty-five by sixty or something like that?
Yeah, the average size is four, a little over fourteen-hundred square feet.
Yeah.
I think the smallest is a thousand, biggest is around twenty-five-hundred. So it's, it's, it's quite a bit bigger than just like a storage unit and with higher ceilings as well.
Has this proposal been in front of the Planning Commission before?
Yes, unfortunately, so everyone knows that, because we've had a, some fairly large number of new commissioners since you came before us, so that's why these questions are coming up. They did come up before us, so we're, those that have, were around there, were familiar with it, but feel free to ask any questions that aren't clear.
Has this proposal been in front of the planning commission before?
Yes, unfortunately, so everyone knows that, because we've had some fairly large number of new commissioners since you came before us, so that's why these questions are coming up. They did come up before us, so we're, those that were around there were familiar with it, but feel free to ask any questions that aren't clear.
I, I thought we saw this back in December, right? Maybe I'm mistaken on that, right? And I'm just trying to understand, right? We have a lot of storage sites, right, in the township already, right? So this looks like it's a hodgepodge of individual businesses under the guise of a condo. It is not office research, we're trying to attract jobs and, and companies, right? And we're taking a good piece of property and we're, we're chopping it up, right? When I took a look at the, the site and the tree plan, right, trees 403 and 402 are the two biggest ones there, right, red oaks, 50 inches plus, 38 inches plus. Are those trees in bad shape? Is that why you want to remove them? Because they're not near any of the buildings, right? They're, they're, one is on the road and one is just along the property line, not where the driveway is gonna be. I just want to understand the rationale, why we take the two biggest trees on that site totally off the land.
I'd have to look into that, but I can look into that. Could you give me those numbers again, please?
Sure. It's on page V dash 3.0, it's a red oak, number 402, 403, 403 is literally sitting right on the corner, right, in Office School Craft Road. If you guys want to come take a look at these two here.
Did you see the, excuse me, did you see the condition of the trees? There's a table there that shows the condition.
I did not, I did not, that's why I'm asking. You know, have you guys looked at them? Are they bad? Are they half dead? Are they falling over, right?
They, they do have the conditions of the trees listed.
It says heritage, it says remove, that's all I could see.
Yeah, and typically it's due to the grading that's required on site, but we can certainly look at.
Yeah, the, I actually had the same comment. The two heritage trees, the one of them I can see why it's taken out, but number 402, which is right on School Craft Road, it's a red oak with a 50 inch diameter breast height, which is a really large mature tree. I couldn't tell exactly, it looks like it may be right in the center of your driveway access, but I would ask that you look at it, and if it would be possible to move the driveway slightly to retain that tree. We're really trying in the township to retain old growth trees, and since you are taking out so many other ones here, which unfortunately, you understand why you have to do that.
Right.
It would be good if you could at least look at that one tree being retained.
Okay, yeah, we will certainly look at that tree.
Thank you.
Happy to look at that. It's not marked as dead on the, the map.
No, it's not, and I drove by today and it looks to me, if I picked it out, it looks like it's in good condition.
Now, I've noticed too that I think there's some walnuts, there's some that are going to be removed. Is there any sock, can you use that wood for anything, or is it, you know, sell it to people? You know, I'd like to see not these trees just burned up somewhere, but if they can be used for a good purpose, you might want to investigate that.
For the walnut tree you said?
Yeah, there's some walnuts there. There were a couple of others that I thought, well, those are good wood trees, and if there's a way that you can either incorporate them in your design, or, you know, sell them to some wood making operation, at least we know the trees are not just destroyed, but no apparent good use after that.
Yeah, I know what the Elks property, I noticed, they did come with a truck and they did save all the big, you know, trunks to use for something.
Yeah, we had suggested to them, like, if they could take some of those trees that they did have to take down and they could use it in their clubhouse that they have, but you don't have that kind of flexibility as they did. But, put some creative thinking in.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Or offer to perhaps purchasers of those units, if they wanted to use it to decorate the inside of their units.
I like the idea, and I appreciate it. We'll look into it.
Well, that was just part one on the tree problem that I see with this site and this proposed plan, right? When you look at the picnic area, it looks like there's 34 trees between the picnic area and the concrete or asphalt that's beside it, right? That come out, right? I didn't see any of them as being marked dead, those are trees 1750 to 1787. If you look at Building D, it's in the far back, right? As you look at it, almost near the top of the screen, that takes out what looks like another 50 trees, okay, of trees that appear to have maybe one that was dead as it's marked on this map that you guys submitted. So I keep questioning why D has to be in here, right? Because it's a well-treated site. When you're taking 389 trees, 389 down, I think the number was nine, right? It's, it's.
How many trees are back here?
It, it sets the township back from appearance, number one. And then I keep questioning the why. Why this use, why at this site? We go from a church, right, Indian church, right, to a warehouse storage, light industrial, under a back door of a zoning number 29, right? And then you have Virginia tile. This is like a triangle, a square and a circle, side by side by side, right? And I just don't see how this follows the master plan as office research, as it's defined, right? It's a backdoor proposal, something else. Now, if I had companies clamoring, and maybe Dennis, you know, people are knocking on our doors, they gotta have this implemented township, right? If there's that kind of demand, I've never heard it, right? To have this type of facility providing this type of use to the township.
But we've already had that discussion, so we are where we are.
So now we're gonna fit within the rules on a backdoor, you know, provision?
Well.
Yeah, we actually went through quite an in-depth discussion on this, and at the time, the existing commission was comfortable with the proposal, so we can't, at this point, backtrack, I don't think, on the approval.
It was also approved by the board of trustees, wasn't it? Yeah, so it's already gone through that whole process.
So they want it, they want it a big way.
It's a done and done.
Well, they determined that it was appropriate. Otherwise, they wouldn't have approved it.
Yeah. Okay, well, I appreciate that background.
Okay, good.
Because I do remember seeing this once before, right? And it may have been a board of trustee discussion in the late part of fall, if my memory is not fading.
Yeah. Any other concerns or questions about the use? Stuart, did you, did you get all your questions answered?
Yeah, I, yeah, it seems fine.
Okay. Yeah. I had the question on, Laura, can you expound a little bit about, you were talking about the landscape islands that you wanted to see in the parking?
Yeah, so you can see on the render here that instead of traditional islands that may be located, like one in the middle or on the corners here, back here, that those are just striped pavement areas instead of actual landscape islands with curb. And so, the PUD requires some additional interior parking lot landscaping that they'll need to accommodate in there, but there, there is sufficient space to do so.
Are there designated parking spots for each unit then?
Yes.
That under, how many, does it vary by the size of the unit?
It varies by the size of the unit and how, like, how the parking layout align, aligned with the individual units, so. It'll be anywhere from a minimum of two for the smaller units to up to four for some of the larger units.
But you may have some retail operations in there?
Yes.
So how are you gonna park, how do you park the, for, for retail?
Um, well, our buyers tend to know what they're buying. It's, we don't have restaurants, and there's no walk-by business to speak of. The retail businesses that we have tend to be things like showrooms that are typically for appointment only. We don't tend to have many people that, with, with like a big, with like an open sign in their window.
Oh, you, you had mentioned gyms that.
Well, they're more of a personal training gym, is kind of more what I meant.
Oh, okay, not a Planet Fitness.
Not. It wouldn't even be big enough if they wanted to put one in.
Small Planet Fitness.
Small Planet Fitness, but yeah, it's, it's more personal training.
And there is parking, I'll say, outside of the frontage, you know, along the south side of the buildings there, for, say, employees, or to leave those, you, front, front parking spaces open for, for customers.
And those are not needed, the spots that are along the pond in the front and then along, on the ends of the buildings, those are sort of a free-for-all.
You mentioned automotive restoration is one of the uses. Somebody wanted to put in a paint booth or a below-ground lift, would those be allowed uses in your buildings?
A below-ground lift? I'm not familiar.
In other words, the, the mechanics are below surface, like?
Kind of like a oil change shop?
Yes.
You really could, no, it's a reinforced concrete ground, you know, floor that we're putting in.
Right.
We do see lifts, so we're doing a five-inch
Above ground?
Concrete base.
Right.
Where the lift is, you know, bolted to the ground, so they could lift it up.
But what about paint booths?
I haven't seen that, I mean, it's not something that we've thought about. Is that, does that strike you as problematic?
Well, yeah, it does, actually, just because, you know, that's a pretty heavily regulated use these days because of the air quality issues.
Again, we do have, we're working on the legal docs right now, you know, the bylaws and the, the master deed and things like that. We do talk about smells, hazardous chemicals, things like that, so I think that would probably, that's what I'm imagining, that it could smell pretty offensive, and so that would be problematic.
Thank you.
And effectively, you're buying a shell that has water and sewer, and that's about it, right?
Uh, yeah, but you could get internet, telephone, I suppose, I mean, we'll have.
Oh, you have that, okay, right, right. But it's, you're sort of buying a shell. If you want to put in a second floor, you can, like, one of the, one of the, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mezzanine.
Yeah, this will, this is the first time, the first project that we're doing that doesn't provide a mezzanine by default, it's an option.
Okay.
In this project.
And is it, is it 24/7? People can come and go as they please?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Sort of like the M1?
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking about.
Yes, but this is, that's just a one-function kind of an operation where this is multiple.
Right, this is whatever you want to do, yeah, yeah. I mean, within reason, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's exactly, sort of what we're going for, I mean, it's, we, we think it's more, a more Plymouth version of an M1. So it's the other, you know, the rest of us who don't have a Ferrari and a Lamborghini and things like that.
At least that you know of.
But the other, oh, sorry, oh, you were just, was that a question? The other states that have things like this, what percent are businesses versus what percent are like individual owners that are just?
That's a great question. We find that they're about 70% small business owners.
Okay.
This is our first one in Michigan, so we'll see, but, but that's, that's been the average across our properties.
Okay, yeah, I guess you'll see who buys them and you'll, the purchasers make, you know, the market shares, I guess.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Laura, developing a recommendation, is your concern about the parking spot landscaping captured in number four of your recommendation on page 10?
Yes.
And you mentioned a waiver on, possible waiver on two loading spaces for Buildings A and B.
Mm-hmm.
Is that included in your recommendation? Would that need to be added?
It's not a listed condition.
So we don't need to mention it?
Yeah, if you're, if you're okay with it, then it can just be a part of the minutes.
Is that a, you're gonna miss the motion? Yeah, are we ready for a motion?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant tentative site plan approval for the Plymouth Flex Development, PC application number 2556, subject to the conditions number one through eight in the planner's report, as well as a waiver on two loading spaces for Buildings A and B, and including the comments from the applicant tonight regarding amending and upgrading the appearance of the building as it faces the Sheikh Temple next door.
By Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Pop to grant tentative site plan approval for application 2556, subject to set conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, and we have one opposition from Commissioner Ices. Do you care to state why?
Yeah, I do. The site plan, A, B, C buildings, right, I didn't object to, but Building D, that's in the back, in the picnic area, basically takes about 100 or so viable trees totally off the site, which I think is going above and beyond what could be done with that site. And I don't see the replacement trees being put in, it's open space, you more than meet the open space, right? So you're compliant there, but I just don't think it's consistent with the sticker that's on that door that says we are a tree-friendly township. This is not tree-friendly, right? I do hope it provides the jobs, I hope that you guys are successful on, on filling these spaces to, to bring jobs here and needed services the township needs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, good luck, see you soon. And, so Bill, just so you know, that temple was originally a spa, and it was a very expensive building to build, because they brought those big rocks in from Arizona.
Was it expensive?
And that didn't.
Is that what you said?
It was a spa, really, yeah.
Oh, I remember that.
It didn't last long.
It didn't last long, yes, yes, yes.
That's why it's that, it's got a different design. But that's what it was originally, and it was in a very expensive building.
It was just like that spa, you know. I mean, I know what you're saying, Tim, but it's, or, sorry, Bill, it, it's just, that area's kind of industrial-ish, you know, I mean.
Kind of rundown-ish.
Kind of, yeah, well, that's, I didn't want to say that, but yeah, I mean, like, anything would make it better.
I think with the temple and this operation and Virginia tile, that's gonna, it's gonna change.
Well, it's gonna make it nice, you know? It'll look cleaner, right? It'll be different. It is not a junkyard or salvage operation, right, to, to the credit, right, of the board and the previous planning commission, right? It, it is different. The execution could have been different.
Yeah, I, I think this relates to when we developed the master plan update, I've made a comment several times that we need to ask developers to do the tree survey first before they develop their detailed plat and, and building plans, so they know where the key trees are. And there's instances where they can move buildings or move roads in, in minor amounts, but still save a lot of heritage trees. So as we go forward, I hope that we're able to work, put wording into the master plan that would encourage developers to take that step earlier in the process.
I couldn't agree anymore. I'm in violent agreement that that should be step one, right, to come up with a plan, right? As a planning commission, right? Tim, I appreciate your, your foresight, I know you were an advocate of this way before I got here, right? And I feel very strongly that we could strive to be different and do better. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful to previous decisions of the board of trustees, the planning commission, because you guys donate your time and, and being thorough is very good, it's just that the A, B, C, D, D is a killer, and the picnic area is just taking out a ton of trees, right? They could put that picnic area in the front if they wanted to and save 34 trees, just like that, and I hope they actually contemplate.
But you know, there's been things that have concerned me quite a bit where applicants have come in, we tell them they have to maintain this strand of trees and take it down. And, and there's not much incentive in penalties for them not to take it down. So, I mean, this is a much broader discussion that should even reach it to the board of trustees if they're committed to that.
Well, it's reached the Michigan Supreme Court.
Yeah.
And it's been turned down.
Yes, been kicked in camp.
So, you know, you can sit here and make all the plans you want, it's gonna, it's gonna have to meet that criteria.
Right.
And it's already proven fact that they, they are not gonna approve it, so.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that entirely. I think the Canton thing was a very specific situation, and they probably made the right choice under that, but I think going forward, we need to be more insightful about this whole thing. And maybe if we do that, we won't get into a situation where an applicant feels they have to go to court.
Where's our tree ordinance at? Do we, we still have one, right?
Yes, we, we have a tree ordinance.
And who enforces that?
Laura, who, who enforces the tree ordinance? Is it the building department, or how, how's that happen?
In terms of if someone wasn't compliant with their site plan?
Yeah.
Um, well, it depends on what stage it's at, the building department, the township does hold a landscape bond for a certain period of time until construction is completed, otherwise it becomes a legal matter.
Maybe as we do the master plan update, we could brief the planning commission on what the tree ordinance is, since it's taken me a while to learn it myself.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that, this is, we're sort of segueing into master plan discussion, which is good.
Yeah.
And this, and I want to shut that discussion off, but I think. Uh, and this, I, and I want to shut that discussion off, but I think when we get to that point about tree canopies and all that in the master plan discussion, that would be a really good time to tear this, uh, item apart and see what, what can we do and what, what's existing now that prevents us from doing some of the things that we would like to do. But good point. Okay.
I appreciate all this with the trees and stuff, and I have a ton of trees on my land, so I appreciate trees. But when it's an industrial or a commercial, I mean, you gotta be reasonable, you know, you can't save every tree, uh, I don't know.
Well, yeah.
I just don't feel as strongly as you guys do, I guess.
It is next to the freeway. They back up to the freeway and then school craft, and then across the street, it's a large, you know, fabrication plant there with Bosco. So, um, I'm not saying trees aren't important there. Uh, but it's an area that has been, uh, in decline, I'd have to say, and this does help.
For sure.
It's really picking up with the, with the temple and this operation and, uh, Virginia tile.
Yeah.
And I think to your point, Commissioner Pop, there is a, uh, we need to be sensitive to what the application of the particular site is. Um, I'm a lot more tuned in on this when it comes to residential developments because of how much old growth trees add to the character of the development, not only for the residents, but also as a way to sell the property, make it desirable for sales.
Oh, when it's, yeah, when it's residential, I, I get it, yeah.
That's why I didn't, um, make a big deal over the loss of almost all the trees on this site, because, again, recognizing for the use of this site.
Yeah.
However, if they could just save that one tree at the front, that would really help, so.
That's fine.
We did ask about that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, there's no unfinished business and everyone, well, let, let me just change it. Are there any other commissioner comments? Since this is what we've been?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay, why don't we do that and then we'll come back to item eight?
Uh, first comment, Seraphand Automotive, uh, drove by that today. They have a large for sale sign out. They removed some of the, um, facades on the building. Um, it still looks horrible.
Wait, where? I'm, I'm sorry.
Seraphand Automotive, it's, it's a, um.
By the freeway.
Across from, it's sort of right through Independence Villages.
Me too. Yeah.
Uh, some of the panels on the building.
Before your time. They're supposed to be building, uh, replacing the building in the back, which was an old car wash.
Oh.
Um, but they took the trees down in the back. Um, so you said they're up, it's up for sale now?
There, there's a large for sale sign, um, and it, and it, and it still looks really, uh, unkempt.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, um, Laura, is there?
We drive by it every day.
I know, I know. It's just that you guys have been suffering, and particularly the people who live in that condo development.
Oh, my God, yep.
Is there anything that we can do to try to see if we can address the situation at this point?
They have been, um, in constant contact with the township, the planning department, engineering, and the building department on what their options are. Um, there's contamination at that site. There's, um, old utilities at that site that they're, they're weighing their options as to how they want to proceed with a development proposal. So they are working on it in good faith.
Does it have a brownfield potential?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
It's contaminated.
Couple of other comments. Um, if you drive through the Plymouth Walk development, you'll see that the trees that we actually fought over and saved, almost all of them, and there's one that looks dead, one large one that looks dead at the front. But almost all the other ones have leafed out. They look reasonably healthy, and it really does, um, I think as much as we could, at the point we got involved in this, add to the development. So I would like to thank the Toll Brothers and the developers for the actions they've taken so far, um, and also encourage them to continue to watch over those trees and give them a little extra help.
Surprised. I think the spine road is narrower than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, we took a look at those models of the condos, townhouses, and, uh, my question was, where are people gonna park? Um, because they can't park on the spine road. It's not wide enough. If you have visitors over, there's no place for them to park.
That's the problem with condos.
I thought we talked about that.
We did. It's a deja vu from last month's meeting when we had the, the Farmer Jay's discussion, when there was no overflow for birthdays or Thanksgiving or Easter or Christmas, and they'll have that exact problem. And, and we got around it, hidden crate, because they were smart enough to put nine overflow spots in a center island to address that very thing. So they will run into that problem.
But maybe we should put that in the master plan, uh, you know, when it's a condo association or, I mean, you know, a condo unit of some kind, there's X number of extra parking places per units, because that's exactly right. There's, there's no, I mean, yeah.
It's not, it's more than just condos. It's clustered housing.
Well, yeah, it's clustered housing too, yeah.
Commissioners?
Okay, um, also.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to note, there is, um, additional parking, on-street parking in that development.
That's, that's what I recall.
There's several areas that where the road stubs out, that there is perpendicular guest parking.
Oh, I didn't notice that.
Not on the road itself, like on-street, but they did provide a couple areas.
Yeah, I, that's what I recall.
Yep.
Um, also, um, I wa- watching the, uh, Board of Trustees, and I think, Bob, it was the most recent meeting, the public comment at the end, um, gentleman got up and thanked the township for our efforts to get the road paved behind Plymouth Walk.
Yeah.
He said it was coming together well, so.
Rich child.
So, it was, yeah. So just wanted to mention that. Um, uh, and then finally, um, MDOT opened up the back road entrances to eastbound M fourteen on Tuesday. So hopefully that will do a little bit to, um, relieve some of the eastbound traffic issues we've had on Enover Road at Hagerty.
I, I hope so too, because North Territorial's backed up a mile every morning, every dinnertime of people trying to avoid the freeway and cutting down with semi trucks and, you know, it's, it's dangerous pulling out into that traffic right now.
Yeah, when I see it pass my house, it's like, wow, they're really, really packed up.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, then we'll move back up to the monthly planning report. Any comments, concerns, questions on that one? Okay, well, then we move on to the master plan schedule and review of the survey, and I'll turn that over to Laura.
Thank you. So the, the township has regrouped on the master plan effort, and, um, there is a steering committee, um, that consists of, um, Dennis, um, Tim and Dave, um, in conjunction with the supervisor, um, that will meet regularly to help guide and, and move this project along. Um, these are, um, there, there's a timeline in front of you that details the, the, kind of the major milestones for this endeavor. Um, there are a number of planning commission meetings and also planning commission study sessions. So these are, um, typically the first Wednesday of the month. Um, but tonight, we wanted to ensure that we have, uh, availability on those dates and that we'd be able to, to have a quorum. There's not gonna be action taken, but if only, you know, three members can attend, um, it's, it's not, it, we need to look for alternative dates, especially with the July survey session. Um, that's July second. So looking for clarification if any of these dates, um, will not work um, for your schedules, and if we can look at all some alternatives. The goal is to adopt this plan, the Board of Trustees to adopt this plan, um, at their December meeting. So have this, um, completed by the end of the year, and that includes a number of, of public touchpoints, including a sixty-three day public comment period that would take place over the fall.
The August twentieth is the, is sort of the deadline date in order to reach those other, um, milestones.
Correct, to have the draft plan, yes.
So question, Dennis, on the study sessions, you want the whole planning committee there at the study sessions, correct?
Yes, if, if at all possible.
Wanna be clear, so we get our calendar set?
Right, 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 right. The more, the more people, the better. I mean, as Laura said, if there's two people, it's not worth it. And get by with maybe six, you know, it is vacation time and that kind of thing.
So three study sessions, effectively.
June, July and August.
June, July, August. I mean, a lot of us haven't been through this. Is it a lot of debate, or we go line by line, or how, how do we do it?
Well, it's like this, you know, what was given to you today, the survey, you know, look at the survey. Uh, Laura, I would suggest that they take it home and think about it if they haven't done so already, and get back to, to you about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind adding a few.
Yeah, adding a few things. Keep in mind, when the, I'll call it the, uh, master plan team, which is the, Laura, and she mentioned who else is there, um, to try to keep it short, because the longer you go with it, people aren't gonna, you know.
Yeah.
And we reach this conclusion about the surveys because, I don't know how many of you, you know, know this, but if you look on the township website, you'll see that in twenty-twenty-three, there was a, a study done, that, uh, a group of, um, U of M students came in, and one of the things they looked at was citizen involvement, citizen engagement. And, um, I don't have my notes from that. If I knew we were gonna get into that, I would, but, um, most people say that they look to online surveys and communicating to the township. They also like the E Township newsletter. So in this meeting that we had, uh, last week, was, um, you know, publish sizing this on the Township E newsletter, which really does not have a limit of, of inches that they do in the paper one that we get. And, um, and putting it on the, on the front page of the township website, uh, encouraging people to take this. And, and we talked about the distribution of this, perhaps sending it out to, uh, uh, the ZBA and other commissions, uh, that exist within the township to try to get a broad spectrum of, of opinions from.
So it's not a scientific survey, but it's gonna be, uh, try to get as, be as inclusive.
Right. Now, Northville Township, when they did their master plan, which they approved in twenty-three, uh, they had four hundred responses, which is not a whole lot, but they also had, um, meetings, uh, you know, with school people, you know, school board, not, I mean, probably it's school board people, but, you know, schools, um, religious leaders, that kind of thing. They went all out on this, but that was a very expensive operation.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for us to start with a scope, what's, what's in our scope and what's not in our scope. Because things like changing ordinances is not in our scope. And, and we don't wanna, we wanna be careful we don't drift off of, uh, off topic, because we could really easily do that.
Because we looked at the survey that was sent out by the planning department a few years back, and when you look at those questions, they're asking these questions as if we could do something about it. You know, if you ask the question, the people are gonna say, oh, well, they're thinking of changing something.
Yeah.
And we can't do that. It's sort of like traffic. What can we do about traffic? I mean, we're limited. We can do some things, but we don't control the roads.
Right. And there's, it creates an expectation, and then, um, if, uh, if everything's free, I want everything.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
One of the questions I thought of was, uh, you know, more recreation? Would you be willing to pay?
Have higher taxes.
Exactly, yeah. Or trade-offs. If you want more recreation, what, you want less of.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So this is an online-only survey, right, or not?
We would do hard copies as well.
If people come into the treasurer's office. Well, if they went to the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, the building department, they can have a stack of them right there.
Yeah, we provided them at the Friendship Station. We did the Park and Rec Plan and some other areas. Some folks took them to the library, I think, and.
Yeah. No, it's fine. I just don't want someone doing like twenty, but whatever. I guess that's a rare thing.
I have twenty variations on my name.
Yeah, exactly. Well, you should put your address and all that, so hopefully we can screen out, you know, some of them.
Yeah, it's just input and it should be, um, framed that way. It's.
It's the data point.
Yeah, it's input. It isn't outcome determinative.
Yeah.
And we have talked about having, uh, because we have to have a public meeting, but also sort of an open house approach where we can have the information out there. People can, in an informal way, so it's not the formal public hearing that we have to have, but more informal discussion to, sometimes those are much, uh, better venue to have that kind of a.
Dennis, I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And I was gonna suggest that in the months of September, October, okay? So we don't get a whole bunch of comments online through Laura that we have to read and try and interpret it, right? It's easier if people come to the mic and give a standing agenda item, right, during those months. We don't get a whole bunch of stuff dumped on us at the end, right, if we've missed something.
Only problem is, is by August twentieth is the deadline that we have to have this thing put together.
No, I get that, right? It just says, we got sixty-three days for public comment, right? They could come to, if they wanted to, a planning commission meeting. I don't know that people know they could do that. That's all I was suggesting. You make it an agenda item so people see that we've reached out to get feedback as opposed to just.
I think we have to have a lot of communication, because people think, well, I didn't know about that after you've done three or four different outreach things. And then they don't know about it. So Laura, do you think if, if people had any additional comments on the survey, get them back to you by Friday?
Yes, I think even, um, Tu- Tuesday of next week, the twenty-seventh will be fine.
Okay, all right.
And just email them directly to Laura.
Okay.
Cause then we'll be meeting on Thursday.
Correct.
So that, that would be great, yeah. Okay, any other questions on the survey thing? We'll have more to come as we proceed through this. If there's nothing else.
Can I go back to, uh, this report with just two questions on it? Um, the twenty-five thirty-three, the forty-six two-hundred, uh, North Territorial, it says it's still under review, but I believe they're building a house on that property.
They are.
They are.
They framed it already.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So maybe we, we either need to look into it or just revise the, the, and then also the, uh, I didn't see it on here, but the Pulte, uh, condos, they're under construction, so, on Sheldon Road.
Oh. Yeah, by St. John's.
You're doing the groundwork, yeah.
Yeah, they just started those, I think.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, that surveying stick's out there with pylons, right, on the edge of the curb, so you're right. I guess that's sort of the driveway will be.
Right, correct. By that light. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it's right on that light, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's actually a good spot where, yeah.
Yeah, I, I did wanna, um, write one other update on the master plan. At the end of the master plan, there's typically a number of pages that walk through and make specific future land use recommendations for specific plots of land in the township. Um, one of the major things for our update will be to do that process again. Um, we talked earlier this year about having a subgroup put together that list, uh, which was to be myself and Kendra. Uh, fortunately, we got Kendra's input before she resigned, and we've now put together that list of potential sites. It comprises twelve new sites, three that were left over from the twenty-fifteen master plan that were never actually a- acted on with the future land use map, and then eleven more that were proposed in the twenty-twenty-one master plan draft, which was never adopted. So that's a total of twenty-six sites. Um, our little subgroup will work through these with Laura. A lot of the recommendations are pretty clear, but some of them are going to need some discussion. So our subgroup will go through those, develop recommendations, and they will need to bring those to you as the, um, planning commission in total. And then that will become something we incorporate in the master plan draft later on. So just wanted to tell you that we have made progress on that particular item.
Anything else from anybody? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight P M? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight P M?
Early one.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight P M. A second.
Moved by Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Ices to, uh, adjourn the meeting at eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourned.